Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is April 9th, 2025, 6:00 PM. And I hereby call this regularly scheduled gathering of the Town Council of Whitestown, Indiana to order. Mr. Clerk Treasurer, if you please do your roll call.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Nichols. Councilman Thomas.
Present.
Councilman Patterson.
Here.
Councilman Smock.
Here.
Let it also be known that I was told by Councilwoman Nichols that he will join us remotely at about 6:30, so we may see him pop on. I'll do my best to make note of it when I see him come in. That being said, if you all please stay and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The little states of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you very much. Fellow council members, if you will hear me, I'd like to make a quick addition to the agenda under item two B. I'd like to add a presentation. I've been told it'll take about five minutes or less for a legislative update for Mr. Mark Schublack. Does anyone have any concerns for this?
I do not.
Negative.
Thank you very much. That will be added as item B, under Presentations. Which brings us to item two, Presentations. Item A, Presentation for the 2024 Redevelopment Commission Annual Report. I don't know if you guys want me to share my screen of the report? Yes, please.
As that's popping up. I'm Nathan Fox, municipal advisor for the town, here to present your annual RDC report. Basically presents 2024's activities for your RDC TIF areas. On behalf of the town's RDC, we have prepared this submission to comply with Indiana Code. As part of that requirement stipulates that we provide this report to the council and present it by April 15th. Also, by April 1st, we present a very similar, or the same, report to the RDC and present that as well. This report has three appendices. Kind of goes over, Appendix A is the Redevelopment Commission detail, kind of goes over what happened last year with RDC, new TIF areas, amendments, new debt, et cetera. Appendix B is a summary of you guys' revenues expenditures and cash balances for the, for 2024. And then Appendix C is some information on your outstanding debt. As stated before, this, by April 15th, we also help the town input this information into Gateway, which is due by April 15th. There is some additional detail that's not in this report that's required to be inputted. Parcel listings, for example, that can be voluminous, so it's not included in this report, but will be also uploaded to Gateway. Appendix A, I'm not, I'm a, if you guys have any questions, feel free to interrupt, but I'll keep it high level. It kind of goes through the RDC members, references other appendices. The one item on here, wanted to point out that you guys did not have any new TIF areas in 2024, but you did issue one bond. It was the Wally's Bond. That is a developer-backed bond. It was issued in December 18th, 2024, for 4.1, 4.2 million for public infrastructure improvements on the site. It's secured solely by the pledge of 80% of the tax increment that is created in that area. So if increment is not sufficient, the town has no other obligation to that debt. This is kind of hard to see, but just wanted to highlight a couple of things on here. This is your guys' summary for the RDC. You had 17.4 million in cash at the beginning of the year. It decreased to 11.8 million, mainly due to, you had some capital, some capital expenditures that were known, that were higher than, than your revenues. Just to break down your expenditures, you guys had 5.4 million towards, was towards debt service. And then you had 11.7 million was spent last year on capital outlays, and majority of that went to the salt bar maintenance building. That was 9 million. And then you had about 2.7 million for land acquisition and road infrastructure last year. And then you had some other professional and other expenses of 200, $200,000. So, nothing unusual or out of the ordinary that wasn't, you know, planned from last year, and this was kind of in line with the expectations. Then the last one's Appendix C. It just kind of goes over your outstanding debt, where you guys are using TIF revenue to pay debt service. I wasn't going to go over individually on this, but if you guys have any questions on any of these outstanding debt and what's being pledged or being used by TIF, I can answer any questions at this time.
Nathan, I just have a quick question. For the bonds that are maturing next, or in, yeah, next year, there's a couple of them. So the revenue that we get will just sit in that TIF district?
Yeah, so if you have any excess TIF above and beyond, whether it's maturing or not, but above and beyond the debt service that's required in that TIF area, that is available to the RDC to use. There are some restrictions to that. One of the biggest ones that has to serve and benefit that TIF area, but they do have some flexibility on that excess revenue for road infrastructure, park projects, land acquisition, that serves and benefit that area.
Okay, thank you.
Short and sweet, that's basically all I have to check the box on that requirement. So if you guys have any other additional questions, you can email me or get ahold of me, so. Anything else?
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Brings us to the newly minted item B for Presentations, Legislative Update with Mr. Mark Schublack.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mark Schublack of the Taft Law. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. I've been asked to say a few words about the legislative matters we're tracking for the town. Chief among them is Senate Bill One, the Property Tax Reform Bill. Property taxes, it's a complex issue. I've been doing this for 30 years and was around when Governor Daniels passed the constitutional caps. And Senate Bill One's no exception. It's 330 pages. This afternoon, the latest update, Amendment 36 was adopted in the House. Governor Braun issued a statement with the adoption of Amendment 36. We have agreed upon a plan to bring property tax relief to Hoosiers and urge the House to adopt that plan and the Senate to move quickly. Keep in mind, the effective dates are two years out, so we'll have an opportunity to assess the impact and hopefully tweak that if we, we live and recognize some unintended consequences. On average, about two-thirds of taxpayers will realize somewhere between $100 and $300 tax relief annually, but all communities are different, and we'll have to work with our financial advisor to assess that impact here. A major concern for the bill was, as it passed out of committee, was that it removed all business personal property tax. And of course, Whitestown has a lot of that nearby. Amendment 36 restored the 30% floor to that business personal property to decrease and lessen that impact on jurisdictions. Now, there will be an impact to the town, and the consequence is local option income tax may be adopted at a rate of up to 1.2% for general revenue purposes for the town. It does phase down the standard homestead deduction and phases up supplemental homestead deductions for taxpayers. These new credits are really designed to help taxpayers with the increased assessed value over the last several years. There will be some targeted tax relief for seniors, disabled homeowners, and veterans. Please understand, as AV, assessed value goes up, the tax rate goes down, and vice versa. And there is some language that enables the Department of Local Government Finance to neutralize windfalls to TIF districts. So we'll have to look at that, as that may have an impact in this community, as business personal property is highly concentrated in some of our TIF districts. On debt, this legislation makes the opportunity to do referendum more limited. Only during general election cycles can we go out for a referendum, so we will have to plan for that, and so it doesn't delay projects. It does change the referendum language to specify both the rate and proposed amount. Currently, the assessed value that exceeds state growth over a three-year period may be captured through a levy appeal process. This bill eliminates the three-year levy growth appeal process. That is one of the primary mechanisms, I should point out, for fast-growing communities like Whitestown to right-size its property tax revenues. And this means that we'll have to look at local option income tax to replace some of that. There will be a new additional procedure for the public hearing on our budget process, and the bill will cap fire territory rates at 0.4%. So on average, this means approximately a 13 million decrease in revenue in 2026, 14.5 in '27, and 18 in 2008, unless there are changes, and I expect some changes, and I expect some changes perhaps in conference committee a week from now. So we can't rely on too much, I'm saying right now. And then just very quickly, I, I will put a punctuation on the budget, and that I'm, my impression is the department heads are very competent municipal executives, and I think working in cooperation, the town manager, with our chief financial officer, the clerk treasurer, we can put together a budget that addresses the changes that will be brought about by this reform. Quickly, I do want to point out, Senate Bill 252 authorizes the Boone County endkeeper tax to be imposed at a higher rate of 8% versus the current 5% rate. That language initially was in 252, has been moved to House Bill 1427. That will be a big fiscal bill. I'm also pleased to report Senate Bill 516 is up for concurrence in the Senate, and that repeals the sunset on regional development authorities. Even though there is no money appropriated in this budget for regional development, it will allow our community, a newer member of that authority, to continue to work regionally. And finally, House Bill 1461 is the road funding bill. That bill will require all townships to adopt a capital improvement plan on an annual basis. Will require a plan to include the balance of all unrestricted funds for townships. The bill does decrease the amount towns must spend on construction, reconstruction, and preservation from 50% to 40% if certain pavement ratings are achieved in the preceding year. And so what that is doing is rewarding communities that maintain their infrastructure at a certain level and providing additional flexibility. There's 100 million dedicated to local roads for local units. There is a maximum grant under the Community Crossings Program, which is very popular. We may have to consider, though, a local wheel tax. The General Assembly is trying to put communities, to put more skin in the game. Tolling is another aspect of this bill, and I don't think it would operate anywhere but 70. And on bridges, it's not very popular, so it may not make the final cut. There's always a lot going on with police and fire. I'll save that for another time. Thank you. I hope this was helpful.
Thank you, Mark. Obviously, this is still evolving, and in some cases rapidly, so keep your eyes on it and let us know as we get further updates.
Yeah, I, I appreciate, because I asked you to come, and I think it's important for the public to know some of the odds and ends that's going on. I spoke with Representative Cash this morning as she was going in to committee hearings, and we were talking about Senate Bill One and our thoughts for that. And on a good note, she did say that our lobbyist, Amy, I think.
Ann.
Ann, was very nice, so.
She told me that she had talked to you through Ann, and
Yes.
I'll just say, for the sake of the public, that you can watch the final debate tomorrow, as early as tomorrow, on the General Assembly website, the debate will be live cast. Thank you.
Forgot to hit the button there. All right. That brings us to item three, the Clerk Treasurer's report. Counsel, you have it before you. Are there any questions, comments regarding the Clerk Treasurer's report, Town Management Report? Hearing none. Item four, the department reports. Those are also before you, counsel. Are there any concerns or observations to be made? Hearing none. Item five, public request to speak. I have one in-house. Do we have any online? No? All right, in-house, Neil Sullivan? As a reminder, when you come to the podium, make sure you state your name and address for the record, and we have a three-minute time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Neil Sullivan, 4285 East, 550 South. I would like for County Road 550 South from the roundabout to 267 to be lowered to a 30 mile an hour or lower speed limit. Ever since the on-ramp to 65 opened, it is a shortcut for the warehouses letting out to cut across to 65, which I know we can't do anything about that traffic, but it would be nice if we slowed them down. I've talked to several of my neighbors who are all, all for it. One neighbor I talked to said that she had talked to a Whitestown police officer, who by the way, do their best to keep people slow along there. They, there's times that I've seen them, you know, running radar, but the problem with that anymore is that there's three or four different apps that locate police when they're running radar. Google Maps does it now, Waze, you know. But I think with as many children that live in these homes, the speed, the speed needs to be lowered. And it's no different than any other residential neighborhood in Whitestown. Every residential neighborhood is either 20 or 30. And right now, we're still considered residential. You know, my, my neighbors and I have tolerated a lot from Whitestown. I know, I don't know if you know the whole history, but our annexation was quite ugly. And people are now not happy. The, you know, we, we seem to be forgotten, except for taxes. I mean, I went from 637 a year, living in Perry Township, Boone County, to 12, 1280 a half now, living in Whitestown, but have not received any of the benefits. Water has been run everywhere around us. We don't have it. Same with sewer. Almost every house on 550 and on the Sanders Court have had a CNJ well drilling sign in their yard for well problems that all seemed to start after the 475 East and 550 South buildings went up and they built those two huge ponds. But the main concern is the speed. You know, something needs to be done. I know that they put up the electronic sign that shows your speed as you go by. Some people just use that as a, you know, see what their personal best is that day. And then the other thing that we actually were promised from the previous, previous councils.
30 seconds.
Huh?
30 seconds, please.
Is no trucks. And there, we were promised no trucks, and there are hundreds of trucks a day. Semis, dump trucks, cement mixers, all using our road as a shortcut. And it's being resurfaced right now, I'm assuming, from the damage from the semis and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. That brings us to item six, Approval of the Consent Agenda.
I have a quick question for, on the Claims Town. And I don't know if this will be a MAC question, or if it would maybe be a Ralston question, but the town paid $6,000 to the Boone County Prosecutor's Office this past month. Do we know why we may have paid them $6,000? I just, I was trying to go back through previous claims, and I didn't see where we had ever paid them before, so I was just questioning it.
This was regarding a federal drug forfeiture type of program, that we, when we get the money, we don't get to keep all of it. It gets dispersed to state programs, county stuff, so that was to, for their portion.
Wonderful, thank you.
Are there any other questions from council in regards to the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion that we approve the consent agenda, which consists of the approval of meeting minutes March 3rd, 2025, approval of meeting minutes March 12th, 2025, and claims, March 2025 expenses town, March 2025 revenues town, and March 2025 utility claims.
Motion has been made and seconded. Matt, if you please do a roll call vote.
Councilman, Councilwoman Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Nichols. Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Uh, Councilwoman Hancock, I think you said here, I said aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That approves, 4-0. Just habit, isn't it? Item seven, Unfinished Business. Item A, Second Read of Ordinance 2025-5, the Rezone Cardinal Estates Project Zoning Map Change. Todd?
Good evening, counsel. Todd Barker, Director of Development Services. This is the second read for the Cardinal Estates Zone Map Change Request, going from agricultural to R3 medium-density single-family. As a reminder, we did hear this at the previous council meeting, and the Plan Commission heard it at their February 11th meeting, where they did send a favorable recommendation on this request. Can answer any other questions? And we've kind of talked about the project already, so if you have any other questions about that, I'd be happy to go through those for you here this evening.
I hear no questions regarding the item. Therefore, I'll call for a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-05, the Rezoning of Cardinal Estates Project Zoning Map Change.
I will second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Sumner, if you would, please.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Brings us to item eight, New Business. Item A, Consider Proclamation by the Whitestown Town Council to Proclaim the Month of April as Child Abuse Awareness Prevention Month. Katie, I understand we have some representatives. Please come up and introduce yourselves.
Good evening. My name is Matt Wilson. I am the Executive Director of Boone County Mentoring Partnership and the President of Prevent Child Abuse, Boone County. And with me is Marla Ward with Firefly, and she is also on, in the Prevent Child Abuse Boone County Group.
Thank you. And before we get to this, if you'd like to take a moment to talk about your mission, I'm more than happy to give you the floor for a few minutes.
Yeah, we just, we, we, as a Prevent Child Abuse Boone County Group, we just are steadfast in, in our belief that we need to do whatever we can to bring about awareness for the most vulnerable in our community, and that is oftentimes the, the children. And whatever we can do to be proactive in preventing any kind of abuse and neglect, we want to ensure that not just individuals, but our community groups, our, our government entities are, are all on board with us. And so, in requesting a proclamation, that's, that's exactly why, why we are doing this.
Thank you very much. The proclamation reads as follows. Proclamation, a proclamation by the Whitestown Town Council to proclaim the month of April as Child Abuse Awareness Month. Whereas children are vital to the community's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most valuable assets. And whereas April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And whereas suspected abuse and neglect of children is the moral responsibility of every citizen to report. And whereas the Town Council, the town of Whitestown, Indiana Town Council actively promotes a proactive response to the problem of child abuse and neglect by supporting the efforts of organizations such as Prevent Child Abuse America to prevent maltreatment in all its forms. And whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by informing families about community resources and services available that can help prevent a family crisis or help overcome one. And whereas finding solutions to prevent child abuse and neglect is furthered by involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting and child development, and concrete resources to cope with stress and nurture children, help provide opportunities for children to grow to their full potential. And whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies are better positioned to succeed with the assistance of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas Prevent Child Abuse America estimates that child abuse and neglect affects 1 million American children each year and costs our nation $220 million every day through investigation, foster care, medical and mental health treatment, special education, juvenile and adult crime, chronic health problems, and other costs across the lifespan. And whereas Whitestown owes a debt of gratitude to concerned citizens and organizations that provide families with services to ensure the physical and emotional well-being of our children. And whereas the Town Council desires to make a positive impact on the future by addressing child abuse and neglect. And future by addressing child abuse and neglect, and whereas the Town Council has previously declared each respective April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the past several years, and whereas in an effort to ensure continued attention to this important issue, the Town Council desires to establish April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in all future years until further action by the Town Council. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana as follows. Section one, the Town Council does hereby declare and proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month each year in Whitestown, Indiana. Section two, the town through its town manager and all of its departments is hereby charged with the responsibility of actively promoting Child Abuse Prevention Month in the town each year in order to make a positive impact on the future through the prevention of child abuse and neglect. Section three, the Town Council urges all citizens to take the opportunity to renew their commitment to protecting the children of Boone County, for in doing, for in so doing, we will enhance the quality of life, not only for children at risk, but for the entire citizenry as well. In section four, the town through the town manager is hereby charged with arranging and planting of a pinwheel garden at the Whitestown Municipal Complex in recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month, Prevention Month each year. That being said, I would happily take a motion on this.
I'll make the motion that we approve the proclamation for designating the month of April as, um, National Child Abuse Month.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Sumner, if you would, please.
Councilwoman Hancock?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Patterson?
Aye.
Councilman Smock?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you very much. Thank you. New business, item B, consider a proclamation by the Whitestown Town Council to proclaim the month of April as Autism Awareness Month. Councilwoman Hancock?
Um, is Megan here? Are you Megan? If you want to come up and introduce yourself real quick.
Hi, my name's Megan Fraser. I work at Baca over there behind Meyer. Um, do you need my address? Or, okay. Thank you for inviting Baca, and, um, I'm very happy to be supporting Autism Awareness Month and the new proclamation. So, thank you.
Okay. A proclamation, proclamation by the Whitestown Town Council to proclaim the month of April as Autism Awareness Month. Whereas autism affects the social, communication, behavioral skills of those living with autism. And whereas as more health professionals become proficient in diagnosing autism, more children are being diagnosed on the autism spectrum, resulting in rates as high as one in sixty-eight children nationally. And whereas while there is no cure for autism, it is well documented that if individuals with autism receive early and intensive treatment throughout their lives, they lead significantly improved lives. And whereas individuals with autism often require a lifetime of specialized and community support services to ensure their health and safety, to support families' resilience as they manage the psychological and financial burdens autism can present. And whereas the Town Council desires to bring attention to the issue of autism in the town. Whereas the Town, Whitestown Town Council respectively requests that the town through the town manager and all other departments actively promote Autism Awareness Month in Whitestown. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana as follows. Section one, the Town Council does hereby declare and proclaim April twenty twenty-five as Autism Awareness Month in Whitestown, Indiana. Section two, the town through the town manager and all its departments is hereby charged with the responsibility of actively promoting Autism Awareness Month in the town to become better educated about autism and create a better community for individuals with autism. In honor of this event, the Town Council encourages the citizens to learn more about autism and what they can do to support individuals on the autism spectrum and their families.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Hancock. That being done, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the proclamation, month of April as Autism Awareness Month.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Sumner, please.
Councilwoman Hancock?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Patterson?
Aye.
Councilman Smock?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
I would just give a brief reason why autism is, um, extremely important to my family. I have a niece who just turned four, who was diagnosed, um, with autism, who is nonverbal. Um, she is finally, with the help of therapies, with the ABA therapies, um, is finally learning to speak, you know, and at four, most kids can say they're ABCs and they're one, two, threes, and she's just now learning those functions. So this is very important, dear to my heart, and I appreciate all you guys do.
Well, I'm happy to hear of the progress she's making, and thank you for groups like yours, Baca, and the other group, uh, and all that they do for our community. Item C, consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, changing the street name for a portion of Center Drive. Todd?
Good evening again, council. Uh, get plugged in here, it'll be easier to talk about this with some exhibits. Uh, this request, uh, is coming as a result of, uh, some confusion with the street name. Uh, and this is the section of, uh, street, the south side of Whitestown Parkway, um, on the opposite side of Perry Worth. So, uh, essentially between Burger King and the former Big O Tire, um, center there. So essentially, uh, on the screen, it's this, this section of road. Uh, and oddly enough, as we were, it is currently, uh, signed as Center Drive, which is also the name of the, uh, road that runs, uh, parallel to Whitestown Parkway to the south. Uh, as we were researching this, it was actually plotted as a different name altogether. Uh, thus why the, the, uh, resolution's written, uh, the way it is. Uh, fortunately, in this stretch, uh, none of the, uh, businesses are addressed off of that street, so that eliminates usually one issue with changing a street name, uh, altogether. But, uh, in an effort to eliminate confusion, uh, on this segment of road, um, and for emergency response, uh, anything, we are proposing, uh, to change that, uh, that small segment there, essentially in red, uh, just to Perry Worth, essentially extending the Perry Worth name that is on the north side of Whitestown Parkway to this, uh, section of road, uh, as well. So that is this request.
So Todd, for the Toyota, what is their address based off of?
Uh, that, I don't know, so that, because that's technically in Zionsville, so I don't have their address. It's essentially south of the current Center Drive is all private road.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not, not public right of way. And I believe, uh, because essentially that's where Kroger is going in Zionsville, I believe that road segment is, uh, changing with that development as well. Um, I don't, I don't believe it's configured exactly that same way.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions from anyone else on council regarding this item? Uh, could you go ahead and stop sharing the screen so I can make sure Toby is not like raising his hand or something?
Yes, sir, but I'm sorry.
It, I doubt he has any major concerns about, you know, wanting to go back to Mac's Avenue, whoever Mac is, but.
I have no concern. I don't know if you can see me. Can you see me?
Now we can.
Excellent. I have no concerns.
Thank you very much. In that case, I would consider a motion for item C.
I'll make the motion, we approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash ten.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Sumner, please.
Councilwoman Hancock?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Patterson?
Aye.
Councilman Smock?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd. Item D, consider approval of out-of-state travel for the GIS staff to attend the twenty twenty-five ESRI user conference.
Todd Barker again. Uh, thank you here this evening. As I was actually looking at, uh, exhibit A, I realized I had the wrong estimate, uh, attached there. That was from our Denver trip. Um, it, uh, but on, uh, on exhibit B, um, the, uh, the attached, uh, estimated project is, that is the correct one. So both of them would be that, uh, estimated grand total, uh, four thousand one hundred and sixteen each, you know, plus tax. So that, that is what should have been attached on both of those.
Thank you, because I wrote that as a question.
Just so I'm clear, you're saying to ignore exhibit A, correct?
So the, the exhibit, or excuse me, the, the budget on exhibit A, yes, is incorrect.
That, okay.
It is, is a part of, uh, exhibit B. So it's for both, uh, David Wilson and Tyler Hudson, both of our GIS staff. Uh, the estimated budget would be the same for both.
Got it.
Per person, yeah.
In San Diego, that sounds terrible.
Uh, yes, uh, that's, uh, ESRI's home base, and, uh, apparently they don't want to go anywhere else, so.
I'm not sure I blame them.
I, I don't think they have too many complaints with, uh, everybody that travels
As a reminder, and I know we said this before for other out-of-state travels, the la, the expenditure is well within your limits to do, it's the out-of-state travel that we are actually approving, not the expense. That being said, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve out-of-state travel for the GIS staff to attend the twenty twenty-five ESRI user conference.
Second.
We have a motion and seconded. Mr. Sumner, please.
Councilwoman Hancock?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Patterson?
Aye.
Councilman Smock?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Brings us to item E. Consider expenditure exceeding original contract price of nine hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty cents in the amount of ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty cents for change order number three, related construction contract awarded to subsurface of Indiana Inc. for AS White Parallel Water Main and County Road Two Hundred South, uh, Santeri and Sewer Main Extension Project. That's a mouthful. Sri, welcome.
Good evening, Sri, town engineer. So, uh, this is a change order number three to that construction contract that was approved by the council back in December. Um, so this is for the amount of ninety-seven thousand seven sixty-eight and sixty cents. And the reason for this change order is by the time we started construction, Friendly's Market has went ahead and paved their parking lot, so we had to go back and, um, put a pipe there, so we had to go back and excavate the asphalt and pave it back. So this is, this is a change order to do that added work. And this is also a project that is funded through the Ready Grant. Uh, we get a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from Ready to do this project.
Can you refresh my memory on when the previous change order was, uh, authorized?
Uh, there has been two different change orders, that was all under twenty-five thousand dollars, so, um, that, why, that's why it never came to the council. That is for, again, unforeseen situations like bad soils. Um, we had to change some valves out to, uh, adjust, uh, the existing water main. So those are for the, uh, other change orders that we approved on the project.
Do we know, did the Friendly know that we were going to be coming in and placing pipe?
Yes, we did. I think some of the work has been completed because Friendly's opened this Monday, so we had to just work with them, and they were very supportive. Uh, they knew we had to do it. Um, they went ahead and paved the project, parking lot last December, um, you know, so that's what happened.
Okay, yeah.
I know you're not a fortune teller, but do you see anything else on the horizon that's coming for this?
Oh, the project, the, uh, the county, the ASW portion of the project is all complete. Uh, we are working on the County Road Two Hundred, and I think we, I mean, there is some bad soils that are being out there, but we have enough contingency in the, in the project to cover some of that. But again, being construction, it's never a hundred percent sure.
Are there any other further questions from council regarding change order number Hearing none, I would call for a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve expenditure exceeding original contract price of nine hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars sixty cents in the amount of ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight and sixty cents. Change order number three are related to construction contract awarded to subsurface of Indiana Incorporated for Albert S. White Parallel Water Main and County Road Two Hundred South Sanitary and Sewer Main Extension Project.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Sumner, if you would.
Councilwoman Hancock?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Patterson?
Aye.
Councilman Smock?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero and is approved. Item, uh, F, consider expenditure exceeding twenty-five thousand, not to exceed five hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars ninety-six cents for the adoption of agreement for professional services between the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, and Butler Fairman and Sayford, uh, Inc. Sri?
Uh, Sri, again, so this one is for the design and land acquisition services for the Main Street Trail that starts from New Hope at the Hawk Signal, um, goes through the Clark Meadows East, uh, Common Area, and ends at the County Road Five Hundred, um, and Main Streets. Um, so there will be connection from New Hope all the way to Main Street Park. Um, Mr. Patterson, if you remember, we met with the HOA last year here, um, because we had to get the Eastman from them through the Common Area, the main, they, they, they did a survey internally, and, uh, the people supported the trail, so we got an approval, we got their green signal to go ahead with the trail too.
And this is not just then the, uh, the design, this is also the acquisition portion?
Correct, it basically not the actual.
Not the build?
Yeah, but yeah, not the actual, uh, money for the land, but it includes all the land acquisition process, appraisals, title search, all that stuff.
Appraisals are built in?
Correct. So the only thing that's not included is the actual cost of the land. And it's still, uh, you know, one and a half to two-year process, because it is two major bridges that has to happen, and there is item approvals and DNR approvals needed, so.
So this is for all the engineering work?
Survey, engineering, land tag, all that, yep.
It's just a lot of.
Per, permitting.
Will this design be incorporated into the design of the roundabout that will go at Main?
The roundabout, yes, so we'll connect to the roundabout there, and then that, that will, that crosswalk will go across on the other side to the east side, yes.
Okay, so they'll, they'll work together?
Correct.
So we're not gonna have to undo?
Nope, no, it's all been connected together, yep.
Are there any other further questions from council regarding this item? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve expenditure exceeding twenty-five thousand, not to exceed five hundred and Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve expenditure exceeding twenty-five thousand, not to exceed five hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-five and ninety-six cents. The adoption of agreement for professional services between the town of Whitestown, Indiana and Butler Fairman and Seifert Incorporated.
I will second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Uh, Mr. Sumner, if you would, please.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Item G, consider expenditure exceeding twenty-five thousand, not to exceed sixty thousand for adoption of agreement of for professional services between the town of Whitestown, Indiana and HWC Engineering Incorporated.
Um, Sri, again, so this is for the, that next round of the Community Crossing Grant application and design. So we, we are planning to apply for the second call this year, which is, um, due July, end of July. So this is for HWC to help through the application process as well as finish the design, uh, for the next set of roads.
Do you have a list of those roads that you're?
Uh, not yet. We are, uh, we have to look at the patient ratings and, um, you know, figure it out. So we, this is just a process to, this will get the process moving.
Well, community crossings has been, uh, pretty important for us so far.
One of the streets we are looking at is Main Street. You know, there is some significant issues on Main Street. So we're trying, trying to figure out if we can do all of Main Street, you know, as one stretch, or we break it down into two years, depending on how much it's gonna cost.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Um, I'll make the motion that we approve expenditure exceeding twenty-five thousand, not to exceed sixty thousand. The adoption of agreement for professional services between the town of Whitestown, Indiana and HWC Engineering.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Sumner, if you would.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Uh, members of council, I was just notified that as we were, uh, consulting about item F, there was apparently a member online that had wanted to speak about this item. Uh, the vote has already been made and carried, but at the same time, I know that we want to be sensitive to hearing people out regarding their opinions. So, um, with, uh, council's, uh, acceptance, I will pause where we are currently and I will allow the online person to, uh, speak their mind. Uh, then if, uh, if we want to do anything with that, we'll have to explore our options. Do I have any serious, uh, concern from council members? Toby?
Um, I, I do not. Sorry, I'm hearing an echo there. I do not.
We have not yet started, um, eight H, so now would be a good time to pause that. If any change would need to be made to a vote, you would need to, um, make an appropriate motion to do that.
Understood. So for further clarity, this is in item, in relation to item F, um, Katie, who was the East member? Heather Gregg. All right, thank you. Um, if Ms. Gregg would like to come on screen and can we get her to be the screen for us? All right, Ms. Gregg, please go ahead.
Hi, um, my name's Heather Gregg. I'm a resident of Clark Meadows, um, specifically in the manor section and my house is adjacent to this proposed trail. And, um, I just wanted to make it known that, listening to what he said about our neighborhood being surveyed and that we were in support of this trail, that isn't entirely accurate. That is the majority vote, but there are still several residents who have serious concerns about the trail. Um, one of those being crime. Um, basically, we're connecting everything north of us to our backyards. This is, goes directly behind several backyards. This area is in between our backyards and two farms. And many of us feel that this doesn't belong in our neighborhood. We believe it belongs on Main Street. I know there's some concerns about cost there, but I just want the council to know that we aren't unanimously in agreement with this. Um, I'm not sure who this trail is catering to in our town because I think there's concern about people walking along Main Street currently and the safety of that, but, um, those people that are walking are probably people that don't have cars and are choosing to walk down Main Street to access the stores. Um, this trail is gonna add about half a mile to their commute and I don't know that those people will actually utilize this new trail since it's gonna add a little time and distance. Um, I guess, I think many of us feel like there is a sidewalk south of our neighborhood and that, why is the town not considering just adding a trail or a sidewalk north of Clark Meadows to connect our very large neighborhood to the parks, to downtown Whitestown? What is the purpose of having a trail go through our neighborhoods? I just am not sure this is a good use of the town's money. Around about at Five Hundred and Main Street is a much more important thing at this time. That's a very dangerous intersection. So this is a lot of money. This is a lot of money, this trail. Bridges, crossing the road. Uh, there were many of us that are gonna be showing up to oppose this trail as it goes on. So this isn't, this isn't a slam dunk. We don't all agree that this is what's best for our community. So I want that to be known.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gregg. Council, if there is any consideration of any sort of amendments to votes, now is the time. I'll pause. Hearing none with council's blessing, I'll move on to item H. Item H, consider adoption of sanitary sewer and water service agreement with Lennar Home for Peabody West.
So this is something that was in, uh, in discussions even before my time here. Uh, when Peabody West was planned out, that I think at that time Danny and, uh, Powers was working with them to make sure that the lift station that's gonna go in is gonna cater to not just Peabody West, but to other developments towards the north side of that too. So, um, so I kind of inherited this and I, I, I completely agree that this, this has to happen so we don't end up having more and more lift stations, uh, for every development up there. So, um, so the, so we, we had them work, uh, we worked with them to upsize the lift station, um, and, uh, upsize some of the sewers that go into the lift station to cater to future developments towards the north. And if you look at the page five of the agreement, it's, it shows that the town will reimburse, um, five hundred thou- thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-four cents for the upsize, uh, cost. Um, it's a delta. Um, you know, we are not paying for their lift station. It's just, uh, you know, a number, a number that's needed to upsize it to what we need. So, uh, that, this agreement is, it also includes a service agreement where we gonna be getting around two point seven nine million from them for all the, um, capacity fees and all that stuff. So, um, so basically this includes both. We are, we're gonna be paying them and they will be paying us for the, um, the service.
So we'll pretty much take this kind of out of the capacity.
Correct. So we basically will deduct this, this much from the capacity fees.
Are there any other further, uh, questions from council regarding item H? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Make the motion that we, um, adopt the sanitary sewer and water service agreement with Lennar Homes for Peabody West.
Second.
Motion is made and, uh, seconded. Mr. Sumner, if you would, please.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Item I, consider adoption of development agreement with Lennar Homes for County Road Five Seventy-Five improvements.
So this is another agreement that was, that Danny was working, uh, DPW was working with the Lennar, um, as part of both the east and west developments for Five Seventy-Five. We were, uh, Lennar was, or, or the developer was planning to resurface Five Seventy-Five, um, that section of Five Seventy-Five. And we thought a resurfacing of Five Seventy-Five is not a good idea because it's only two, two to three inches of asphalt there. So we told them to come up with the, uh, amount for how much they would spend on resurfacing. That, we wanted to do a full-depth reclamation, basically taking the whole asphalt, reclaiming it and adding a thicker section of asphalt on it. So, um, so Lennar will be paying us five hundred and seventy-seven thousand and four hundred and thirty-nine dollars towards our full-depth reclamation so that we don't want the resurfacing. We'll do a much better, uh, project for that. So this, this agreement is an agreement that they will be paying us money that will go towards the, the project that is currently under construction.
Would that include widening of the road? Because I know we asked Lennar to, there's right of way that's been dedicated for us to do an expansion of that.
Right. So we will be building those turn lines into both the east and west facility. That is only widening that's gonna happen, uh, at that Lennar, uh, Peabody East and West. We're gonna add turn lines and pass, passing blisters. This would include that too.
So it doesn't actually include any reconstruction of the road itself?
The, the full-depth reclamation that we are trying to do is kind of a full-depth, uh, reconstruction. So it's more than just resurfacing. It's basically takes the whole asphalt, reclaim it, and then we put in, bring new asphalt on top of it.
But it's, will still only be the two lanes?
Correct. There is no widening because there is, yeah, that's, that's, that becomes a really big project then, so, yeah.
And I know we spoke, but we're not doing this until the fall.
Correct. This, the current schedule we have is, this is gonna be the last part of the project that is currently, uh, out there, so probably July.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I asked because, um, on Peabody West, they still have a lot of heavy equipment out there. Um, and I hated for us to redo the road only for that equipment to tear it right back.
And then there is some utility poles on the east side that has to still be moved before we can widen that. So that is all on Peabody to do that before we can do this widening.
Are there any further questions from council regarding this item? I'd entertain a motion.
Um, I'll make the motion that we approve the adoption of the development agreement with Lennar Homes for the County Road Five Seventy-Five improvements.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Sumner, please.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item J, consider adoption of annual wellness and fit-for-duty evaluations and service agreement between the town of Whitestown, Indiana and Hendricks County Hospital, doing business as Hendricks Regional Health, Chief.
Good evening, council, and thank you. I'm just asking for consideration to approve this agreement. The two-year agreement with Hendricks Regional Health for our employees' annual physicals and fit-for-duty evaluations as needed. Um, it does come with a favorable recommendation from the Fire Board.
And as a reminder to council, this is the same group and same system that was done previous year.
Correct.
Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion for the adoption of annual wellness and fit-for-duty evaluations and service agreement between the town of Whitestown, Indiana and Hendricks County Hospital, doing business as Hendricks Regional Health.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Matt, please.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item K, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash six, an ordinance of the Town Council of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, meaning the town of Whitestown Employee Manual with respect to the handling and issuance of town-owned vehicles as employee fringe benefits.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have this item. Um, for those of you who do not know me out in the members of public, my name is Ashley Albrecht. I'm serving as the town attorney. Good evening. And members of council, if you recall back in January, you asked the town manager to work alongside with legal and our financial accountant to ensure that the town's take-home vehicle policy comports with IRS regulations. After discussion with all of these members, the town manager and her staff, we landed on this amendment, which amends the current valuation rule that's in the town policy now. It dictated mileage, which required staff to track mileage, um, based on the commuting rule under the IRS regulations. I'm sorry, under the mileage rule. This amendment changes that to the commuting rule. The calculation under this rule is achieved by multiplying each one-way commute valued at a dollar fifty per trip or thirty dollars per pay period under the standard IRS regulations. I'm happy to take any questions anybody has. Um, I'm, I'm guessing all department heads and town manager and everybody was okay with this recommendation?
And I want to say thank you to the town manager, legal, crown, all the department heads, and Matt, your office, uh, for doing exactly what we'd asked and working together to come up with the, uh, the best way to enforce the policy, uh, so we don't run afoul with the IRS and finding the most minimal impact to our employees. Thank you for the effort. I know it was not pleasant nor fast, but thank you for doing the work.
Um, I do have one other question. Um, I know police and fire have their own separate, um, take-home policies, um, for while they're on duty. Um, this caution kind of was brought up over the weekend. For those officers that are working for other departments or other doing outside, like, security jobs or working at the churches and stuff using our town vehicles, do they have to pay for the gas or any of that stuff while they're working those second side jobs? Or is the town covering all of that expense as well? That's a great question. I'd, I'd have to direct you to the Public Safety Department heads for that. I don't know the answer to that question. Okay. It was, somebody had asked me about it since we were talking about the policies, so. Sure, this, this, um, I've not heard that question before and I don't have the answer for you tonight. Well, I think it's because this was probably the first time somebody saw them out directing traffic from the Eagle Church, 'cause so it was right out in front of everybody. Um, and they did, it just happened to be one of our officers. So I don't know if that officer was currently on duty, off duty, our gas, not our gas, so I wasn't sure. I would assume that most off-duty or on-duty assignments have specific general orders associated with, um, what you were saying. So I'm sure that's a simple conversation with, with, um, either the chief of police or the chief of fire and they'd be able to answer that question for you. Okay, thank you.
And for clarity on this ordinance, um, I know you were asking specifically about public service. This does not, this does not impact public service. They have their own general orders, nor does, uh, any employee get responsibility for fuel maintenance and that sort of thing in this document.
Right.
I just want to make sure no one thought that we're gonna start on that path, on that path. That being said, um, Ms. Bar, whoop, sorry about that. Um, you and I had had a conversation and you had asked if the council would be willing to, uh, forego a second read, uh, so that this can get started with the next April pay period and cause less backlog for you. Is that still your desire?
Yes, please.
Um, as a reminder, council, uh, to waive the second read would require unanimous support. You can support waiving the second read and then still vote no on the ordinance should you choose. I want to make sure that everybody knows they're not tied together. However, um, before we get to the actual ordinance, does anyone want to make a motion to, uh, waive the second read and do the second read tonight?
I'll make the motion that we waive the second reading.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Sumner, if you would.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
All right, so therefore we'll go to second read at this time. Council, are there any further questions regarding this item for this ordinance? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2025-06, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, amending the Town of Whitestown Employee Manual with respect to the handling and issuance of town-owned vehicles as employee fringe benefits.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, Mr. Sumner, if you would.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Final item on the agenda is item L, first reading of ordinance 2025-07, an ordinance of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, amending ordinance number 2024-21, the 2025 salary ordinance. Ms. Barr?
So what I'm asking here, council, is for the town to pick up the commute fee from the first payroll period in January until the end of the payroll period ending April 20th. So the actual policy will be implemented on April 21st. The amount will be roughly, give or take, around $3,000 total for all employees once we figure out everybody up to the 21st of April.
As a matter of note, Ms. Barr, when you're saying the total will be around $3,000, that's for all employees, it's not personally?
Total, correct.
Additionally, it's important to point out that this total is obviously well below your spending threshold, but because it's amended to the salary, that is why we are considering it at this time.
Correct. I would also like to ask council to consider suspending the rules for this as well so that this can be passed so that we can implement everything on the 21st of April.
Regardless of if council is in favor or not of this ordinance, I do encourage you to suspend the second read so that it lines up congruently with what we just passed a moment ago. That being said, again, it must be unanimous to suspend the second read. Do I have a motion to suspend the second read?
Prior to the motion, may I ask a question?
Yes.
While we're still on the first read here, just a question for town manager Barr. What's the significance of starting it on the 21st? I wanted to ask for the previous one as well, but now since we're on a topic now...
It's the start of a payroll period, so for tracking prices, it makes it easier.
Understood.
Thank you, Toby. Are there any further questions before I ask again for a motion to suspend the rules? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to suspend the rules regarding the second read of ordinance 2025-07.
I'll make the motion that we amend the rules to have a second read of ordinance 2025-07.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Sumner, if you would, please.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Rules are suspended. We will go into second read of ordinance 2025-07 to update the salary ordinance for this payment.
I will make the motion that we approve ordinance 2025-07, the 2025 salary ordinance update.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Sumner, if you would.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Thank you all. Item nine, other business, I see none. Is there anything that got snuck in or any of the council members wanted to say? Hearing nothing, we go to item 10, adjournment. I will take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sumner, if you would.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
We are so adjourned. Thank you. Eric did not make it.